Um, so. Uh, we are going to move on. It is seven thirty-two. I'll call the um Lansing City Council to order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Hey, um, council member Betts.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Council member Dunbar. Uh, council member Garza.
President participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Council member Hussein.
President participating remotely from South Lansing, uh, Michigan.
Council member Jackson.
President participating remotely from.
Council member Stedifor.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
That's member Spitzley, council member Wood.
The president, um, participating remotely from the west side of Lansing, Michigan.
And council member Dunbar.
Uh, no sign of her yet. Um, she was at Cal, so uh, we'll keep an eye out for her.
So six members present in form, council members, our and Spitzley are absent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cook. Uh, next up is our meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone? Council wishes us to specifically keep in our thoughts as we uh, reflect this evening. Council member Jackson, please. Councilor Jackson, uh, you, you're on mute still.
Sorry about that. Keep in mind the, in our prayers, uh, the family of Darrell Smith, Jr., who was killed on March thirty-first to gun violence in Lansing. He was a student at Sexton High School in the band, a sixteen-year-old. And we want to keep their family, his family in our prayers. And also for the nineteen-year-old that was killed yesterday in Lansing by gun violence. We would keep his family in our prayers as well.
Thank you, council member Jackson. We will ensure to keep those families in our thoughts this evening. Anyone else? That being said, if you'd all please join me in a moment of reflection. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that.
Okay, you have to review approval of the proceedings of March eighth and March twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Chair, I would move the uh, approval of the printed council proceedings for both March eighth and the twenty-second as presented.
So both proper, as a proper motion, uh, is there any discussion on the proceedings? Seeing none, which clerk, which please call the roll.
On the proceedings, council member Betts.
Yes.
Council member Garza.
Yes.
Council member Hussein.
Yes.
Council member Jackson.
Yes.
Council member Stedifor.
Yes.
Council member Wood. Six years, you're amazed. The proceedings are approved and we are to um, comments by council members and the city clerk.
Sure, um, I'm gonna just start by apologizing to everybody for having to be virtual again. You know, I know we've kind of talked a lot about this back and forth. Um, so my apologies for the confusion that it may have caused, bringing folks uh, expecting us to be back partly in person today, but not being, being able to do that. I did have some conversations with um, Linda Vale at Department of Health and uh, they weren't gonna shut us down, obviously, but she made some strong advice that it was not the right move to, to bring folks back in at this point in time. And I agreed with her and so did our vice president. Um, so I apologize for that confusion, but we are working using the best information we have before us to make sure we're making um, decisions that keep in mind health and safety of, of you all, as well as the, the public that may participate. So again, my apologies that that was a, a last-minute change of, of plans, but uh, that is the nature of a, of a global pandemic. So I thank you for your understanding. Councilor Jackson.
Thank you. I just want to invite anybody who would like to, to subscribe to my newsletter, The Fourth Water. It's a email newsletter with council updates where we discuss different topics that's going on and also email back and forth. Just a way to stay connected since our normal constituent contact meetings, for the most part, has been paused during the pandemic, but the pandemic keeps going on. And so does council business. So we're just trying to find ways to reach out. If you would like to email me at bryant.jackson@lansingmi.gov and I'll add you to that newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Jackson. Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the time. I wanted to take uh, the opportunity and thank just a few folks that, um, in my opinion, have went above and beyond um, to address constituent ratepayer concerns uh, over the past couple of weeks. First would be um, Nathan Arnold. Nathan is a superintendent um, in operations and maintenance. Um, and he really, um, as I stated earlier, just went above and beyond. Assist one of our third ward residents um, with the recycling issue. And I'll kind of leave it at that. There were some long-term issues. A ton of frustration on the part of this uh, particular constituent. And with a bit of sincerity and, and hard work, Nathan was able to assist and remedy the problem. So Nathan, if you're listening, we really appreciate you. Um, if you're not Andrew Kilpatrick, please let him know how much we appreciate him and his work. Um, I also want to thank Kelvin Jones of the Board of Water and Light. There have been several issues uh, that have been sent my way over the course of the past few weeks, uh, that have necessitated me reaching out to the board. Uh, and each and every time, uh, the issue is dealt with, you know, almost immediately. Uh, and so I want to thank Kelvin. Um, obviously, you know, this is the type of uh, response we have really come to expect from our own-time utility, but I think it's important, you know, that we acknowledge really the, the heavy work and, and the lifting of the, you know, these heavy mountains that are being dumped kind of behind the curtain. Um, to, to again, address some of these constituent ratepayer concerns uh, that we, that we are onboarding all the time as, as your frontline representatives on city council. Um, the, another issue we've heard a lot about over the past, um, you know, really probably the past month since the snow stopped flying, uh, is trash throughout the city. Um, and of course, we have coal compliance out. Of course, we have premise out working with property owners to address, you know, on residential or commercial properties, the trash accumulation. We have our mowers uh, that are beginning work again on city parcels and they, you know, obviously are dealing with trash pickup and things of that nature. We have our public service department out. And they're working to address, um, you know, dumping and the like. Uh, but we agree. Uh, there's, there's a ton of trash, um, you know, throughout the city of Lansing. And we are working on to address. There is a, a program that I don't, I don't know that everybody is aware of. Um, I've worked with a couple of our neighborhood groups along with our um, Department of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement Director, the Lisa Fontaine, um, just in connecting these groups. Uh, there's actually a, a program in place where uh, that particular department will actually supply two residents who wish to do small neighborhood cleanups. Uh, they will actually supply uh, for every five volunteers, a serve Lansing shirt, um, along with uh, two rolls of trash bags, work gloves, things of that nature. And then they'll actually work with the public service department um, to pick up uh, any trash bags that uh, are actually collected during that effort. And so if you are interested in any, you know, neighborhood-specific cleanup um, where you want to organize uh, with, you know, maybe a few neighbors, concerned neighbors, uh, just get out and, and clean maybe some of those areas that we're just not able to get to. Um, you know, please contact Delisa Fontaine with the Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement Department. Uh, you could also contact the mayor's office and they certainly could connect you to city staff. And then in addition to that, uh, councilman Garza and myself are working, and councilman Garza really has done a lion's share of the work, so I want to credit him. Uh, but we're working with um, uh, some groups for a, a pretty substantial um, effort on April twenty-fifth, I believe is the date. Councilman Garza, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and we're going to be taking a look at some of these corridors that are really in trouble right now. So we're looking at Edgewood, we're looking at Cedar, we're looking at Southway, but we're looking at um, you know, some of the western portions of Miller Road, um, because we, we know, um, there's a lot of work to be done out there. And so we're gonna be out there uh, with a number of volunteers, um, sleeves rolled up, obviously in a COVID-conscious way, um, you know, working to address some of those issues as well. So um, your concerns um, have not fallen on deaf ears. We are at the city working. Uh, we have volunteers out working, council members are out working. Um, it would be fantastic if folks would, you know, not discard those things out into the roadway and, and out to the public right away, things of that nature. But um, the fact is, is, you know, that they do. And when that, that snow melts, unfortunately, um, there's, there's quite the accumulation each spring. So we're, we're addressing. Lastly, um, I wanted to, um, if you haven't heard, um, the five-one-seven cup, co- uh, coffee company, sorry, has opened up for business um, at their new location. So this is at six zero three zero South MLK. This is at the old Bacon Cakes South location. Um, their new storefront support, uh, supports really their, their kind of, their growing uh, roasting operations was their wholesale business, but now they actually have um, you know, some retail operations. And so I would uh, highly encourage folks to get over there. They actually had a ribbon cutting the day at four P M. Um, I was incredibly bummed. I was not able to make it. I had some work commitments with regards to school and I had a committee meeting at four-thirty. Uh, but that being said, I do know that um, that ribbon cutting was well-attended. We appreciate the mayor for getting out there. Um, I believe Sarah Anthony was out there, Derek Quinney, I think our registered thieves was out there. We appreciate you guys getting out there, supporting uh, five-one-seven and they try to make a go of it on South MLK. Um, and, and you know, there's this larger cop, more comprehensive effort on South MLK to really um, you know, drive, um, or I should say really kind of move the dial, uh, in terms of investment, in terms of supporting existing business um, through corridor improvement authorities, um, through facade, you know, projects, things like that. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking folks to get out and, and really support, you know, one of the most important lifeblood corridors here in Lansing. Uh, being South MLK and, and because there's just a number of new businesses, uh, nonprofits and things like that, that position themselves on South MLK. So uh, get acclimated, uh, get comfortable and support as best you can. Uh, and President Stedifor, I appreciate the time.
Of course, thank you for that update. Uh, Mr., Mr. President, start over. Council member Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate that. So yes, uh, that is, oh, I'm taking my hand out, sorry. Uh, that is correct. It's April twenty-fifth. We are doing a, um, a night focused on South Lansing. We're gonna do a big cleanup. We're partnering with the Church Nazarene and you know, Adam, I thought I was gonna have a little more details today to share, but uh, Pastor Travis has been on vacation. I talked to him today and we're gonna finalize the details in regards to how many volunteers we will actually have on that date, what the exact times are. And uh, and then we can figure out exactly what projects we will be tackling. But if anybody's interested, email myself or Adam Hussein. My email is jeremy.garza@lansingmi.gov. Um, and we'd love to see you out there that Sunday. Uh, we're gonna plan a cleaning up from Edgewood from Martin Luther King to Cedar Street. Down Cedar Street, you know, there's trash down the planters. We're gonna be replanting those planters on Cedar Street this year. Uh, North Cemetery, we're looking at uh, tackling that and hopefully a few more projects, depending on the uh, amount of volunteers we end up getting. Uh, one, one, one more thing I wanted to mention, tomorrow at eight A M., uh, there's a rally to support the A T U local ten thirty-nine, uh, CADA employees. They're in contract negotiations. They've been without a, um, uh, a contract for sixteen months now. Uh, they're gonna be standing in solidarity. I will be joining them tomorrow at eight A M. At ten-twenty Long Boulevard Lansing, that is across the street from Lowe's. Please show your support. These people have been working throughout our pandemic, uh, the whole time, haven't received any bumps in pays. And uh, and uh, I'm gonna be staying there in solidarity with them, supporting them as along the way. So hope uh, we can see some of our Lansing residents, let them know that we support them as well. So thank you.
Thank you, council member Garza. Um, I see no further hands from the council. Uh, Mr. May, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, President Stedifor. Just a couple of brief announcements, uh, once again, for those uh, who live in the uh, boundaries of the Holt School District or Waverly School District. Uh, there is a May fourth election, still time to uh, vote absentee. If you wish, uh, you were sent an absentee ballot application, uh, which you can return. And uh, we did, uh, we have mailed out all the ballots that have been requested so far. Uh, the polls will be open on election day from uh, the traditional seven A M. until eight o'clock P M. And then finally, I want to also uh, announce, uh, remind that uh, this is a city election year. Uh, there are six city offices up for election. Uh, the mayor, city clerk, uh, two at-large city council positions, as well as the second and fourth ward city council positions. And the filing deadline is four o'clock P M. Um, next Tuesday, the twentieth of April. Um, so the paperwork has to be filed in my office and uh, we are using an appointment system for most uh, things, but uh, the pet we, our system that we use only allows one appointment at a time. Um, so you can to file for office, come in without an appointment, or you can make an appointment uh, by um, calling our office at four eight three four one three one. With that, uh, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the uh, viewing audience has an announcement of an event, we'll give you up to one minute to uh, tell us about your event. And so you would want to raise your hand just now if, if that's what you want to do. I see a few hands and just again, if you're raising your hand right now, that is for an event announcement. Uh, so moving forward, we have Steve Solis followed by Linda Appleton. Go ahead, Steve.
Hello, I'm Steve. So hey, so we're hoping to comment on something that Councilman Garza commented on.
But this is, this is not the public. This is the, this is the time when you can announce an event. So if you want to comment on general city items, that's at the end of the agenda.
Rally tomorrow. The rally tomorrow.
Oh, oh, great. Okay. Yes, you can announce the rally tomorrow. Sorry. Go ahead. Yep.
Council member Garza, so thank you very much. Ten-twenty Long Boulevard tomorrow.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, next we have Linda Applin followed by Loretta Stanaway. Linda. Linda, I think you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Okay, I guess uh, we'll come back to Linda at the end if, if we because we don't seem to be hearing her. So Loretta Stanaway and then Stephen Clem.
Good evening. I'd like to announce the spring cleanup of the Mount Hope Cemetery that will be hosted by the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries, and that also will be on Sunday, April twenty-fifth. We will gather at the Fratrum Memorial Garden between one o'clock and three o'clock to go out into Mount Hope Cemetery and do a spring cleanup. Our group will be providing gloves and masks and uh, yard waste bags, along with COVID-safe snakes, uh, snacks and beverages. Um, you can register for this, please, at our Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemetery's website under F O L H C at wildapricot dot org, or on our Facebook page, there is a link for the event. If you would register, please, it will help us know how much to provide by way of beverages and snacks for you and how many supplies to have on hand. Also, um, as we get into this season, North Cemetery mentioned by Jerry, Jeremy Garza, uh, we have a now a volunteer from the Friends group who is going to act as an ambassador team leader throughout the season to keep volunteers in that cemetery on a regular basis, picking up trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Stephen Clem, followed by uh, Michael Lynn. Uh, we lost Stephen.
Hello there. My name is Stephen Clem. I'm Vice President of A T U ten thirty-nine. I'd like to talk about the rally we're having tomorrow. Along Boulevard and uh, Councilman Garza, I appreciate the props and uh, look forward to seeing you tomorrow. I'd like to invite all of Lansing out to support our local union. We've been working without a contract and I think we could use everybody's uh, support and solidarity. We uh, we look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow and remember to mask up. We are gonna have a friendly, safe rally. Keep your social distancing and uh, look forward to seeing everybody there tomorrow at eight A M. Thank you very much for your time and I can't wait to get this back in person.
Thank you. Um, next we have Michael Lynn, followed by A T U.
Uh, thank you. Black Lives Matter Lansing is having a general membership meeting this Saturday, uh, April seventeenth at two P M. Uh, you can find the Zoom link on B L M Lansing's Facebook page. Uh, where we'll be doing the work to try to remove some of these seats here. Um, outside of that, A T U local ten thirty-nine needs your help. They will be out along Boulevard, as everybody has stated. Uh, America Twenty Life has been chronicling this uh, travesty that's happening with our CADA workers in the city right now, uh, by way of this administration, four board members that, uh, this Andy Shore has placed uh, that are refusing to negotiate. Um, so we will be out there in support of them tomorrow. Um, and then also, uh, there will be a rally at the Capitol tomorrow at noon, uh, to repeal the, or excuse me, to um, uh, to bring awareness to the, I believe, thirty-nine, uh, proposed voting changes that are to suppress our vote further. Uh, so that's at noon tomorrow. If anybody could show up for that. But again, with A T U local, uh, ten thirty-nine, uh, what's happening to them is, is appalling. Uh, please show up out there tomorrow. Uh, Andy Shore, you'd like to come take pics. We can't wait to see you out there. Uh, show up, show your support for these guys. Maybe you can make a change here and put something in play for them. See you all. Take care. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And A T U.
Yes, I'm James Beach with A T U ten thirty-nine. I'd like to get everybody out there to support our rally. Um, we've been working without a contract for way too long. Um, Mayor Andy Shore appoints four of our board members. I would like you guys to encourage them to, to give us a fair contract. That's all we're asking for. Stop the union busting and please support our contract. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I see Council member Dunbar has joined us. If I can get her for the record to state where she is, uh, calling from.
Council member Dunbar.
Sorry, I had to reset a router here at work. Um, I am participating remotely from South Lansing. Sorry about the delay.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, uh, can we have Linda Applin one more try? I believe she had a community event announcement and we couldn't get any sound from her.
That's fine. I know Linda's had some public comment in the past, so it might be that. But Linda, if you wanted to speak on the community events, please feel free.
Okay, looks like it's not gonna work. Okay. So speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Um, we do need you to please raise your hand. Um, star nine on the phone, uh, the raise hand icon, um, in Zoom or alt Y uh, together on a Windows or option Y together on an Apple computer. Uh, we will cut off, um, the sign up after the first speaker, or we will give it, we will make sure you have at least three minutes to raise your hand, uh, plus the time that the mayor is speaking. So um, for public comment, please uh, begin raising your hand uh, right now. And it, um, for this section, it is legislative matters, which includes the eight public hearings on ordinance, uh, repeals. Um, as well as the items listed on the agenda under the consent agenda, uh, resolutions for action and ordinances for introduction. And so again.
Mark, real quick, I just want to let everyone know that i- item nineteen uh, will not be considered this evening, although you can still make public comment. We're just, it didn't come out of committee this evening.
And was there one other item that didn't come out of committee?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Although it was a while ago.
Okay, uh, so we will go to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, uh, wanted to recognize and wish everyone a happy Ramadan, which begins, I believe, in about eight minutes. Um, so tonight is the first night of Ramadan for the Muslim community. It's a time to focus and pray and reflect. Um, we've typically had the, uh, we've typically joined the city of East Lansing to hold the mayor's Ramadan unity dinner, but certainly due to COVID nineteen, um, we can't hold that safely this year, uh, hoping to bring it back next year. But the event every year uh, brings the Lansing community together to raise awareness of food scarcity, uh, which is certainly a, a big issue facing children, seniors, families. Um, we raised a lot of money for the Greater Lansing Food Bank. So hopefully, everybody will continue to go out and contribute to the Greater Lansing Food Bank. Um, I wanted to, to agree with Councilman Hussein and Garza. Uh, we are doing a lot of work on trash. We're seeing a lot of that, uh, with COVID. Certainly, there are a lot of people that are eating out and unfortunately trashing our city, throwing bags out the windows, things like that. Um, we got complaints over by Ingham Park, so I want to thank Officer Dylan Rust, who, who grabbed a few police officers. Myself and Mark Lawrence joined him and we cleaned up a good chunk of that park. Um, and I mean, honestly, the first thing I found was this was a Chick-fil-A bag. And we all know we don't really have a Chick-fil-A in South Lansing, so clearly people are taking out food, bringing them to our parks and trashing our parks, which is extremely disappointing. Um, and I hope that I encourage, I, I, I very much hope no one's going to do that, but um, we certainly have to get out and make sure that we're helping to clean our city. Um, I want to commend Councilman Garza and Hussein uh, for doing their, their yearly cleanup. I know it was usually just Edgewood, but now they're doing the whole south side. And uh, as Councilman Hussein said, we are, um, we have a program, but we're going to be kind of announcing and, and pushing out um, these smaller neighborhood cleanups. Um, and we're planning to have one big neighborhood cleanup day coming up, uh, in April or May. Delisa Fontaine is working on all of this. Um, you know, I'm gonna be out there and I hope everybody will get out there and clean our, our parks. Um, the, the service roads to the highways, again, Edgewood and the four ninety-six entranceways uh, are trashed and, and we have to get out and clean that up. Now that the snow has melted, um, we're seeing evidence of it. And it's, again, it's, it's very disappointing, disheartening. We, we take pride in our city, so we'll have to get out there and, and all um, do the work to, to make sure that we're cleaning our city. Uh, and the city will provide trash bags, will provide the grabbers, um, and a variety of other, um, things needed. So, um, thank you for, to the councilmen and for everybody else for helping out in that area. Um, I also wanted to reference five-one-seven coffee. Um, we had a great uh, ribbon cutting today. I got my herbal tea. It was delicious. Um, so I'm really excited for five-one-seven coffee. Uh, that's a great space. We put facade money in. Um, so thank you to council and, and uh, we, we put a lot of money into that, that space. And now it's, it's occupied with a great business, uh, that's been a, a southside business. So really excited for that. Um, I also want to point out, I've had a few people ask me, so I want to make sure to say this publicly, the Old Market Fresh on South Washington is going to be sold-ins. Um, I think some people know that and some don't. So we had asked for a sign to be put up and I, I drove by today and I saw the sign is now up, future home of sold-in. So that's, it's good that that space, which is a really important space, uh, is being repurposed. So that's good news. There's good stuff coming. Um, and for those who don't know, and, and I know, you know, the council people on the south side, they know that, uh, I know Adam's been working on that. Um, so we're excited about that. Um, wanted to, to give folks a heads up. Um, for those who don't know, Congress is now taking, um, federal, uh, community service grants. Um, they used to call them earmarks. Um, and Congresswoman Slotkin is, is, we're working with her to provide a grant, uh, Michigan Corridor Grant. We're also working with um, CADA and we're working with uh, CapCOG and the airport and a few others to try and get grants submitted so that we can bring federal dollars back to, back to Lansing. Um, Congresswoman Swat- Slotkin's office has been incredible, working with us. So, um, we'll be getting those applications in. When we get it in, we'll certainly send it over to council to let you all know. But um, it's kind of a feverish pace right now because there's a lot of folks that are applying. Um, I wanted to congratulate Nicole Noel Williams. Uh, for those who don't know, she is now the executive director of the, the airport, of the Capital Region Airport Authority and our, our Lansing Airport. So um, she had, had been there for many years, went to work for Senator Gary Peters and now is coming back as our executive director. Uh, she can do a great job. I'm really very excited to have that spot filled and, um, and she's gonna do just fantastic. So congratulations to Nicole. And finally, I want to make sure that everybody in the viewing audience knows that the, uh, the Biden administration has extended the health insurance marketplace, um, the special enrollment period through August fifteenth. So if you don't have health insurance, um, please take a look at the, um, the insurance marketplace and, uh, and the, the enrollment period is extended to August fifteenth. So opportunity to, to get out there and, and to get your health insurance. Um, that's what I've got, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Clerk. Hey, um, thank you. So we are to public comment on legislative matters. And I do need to read, uh, inform into the record, the public hearings. We have a series of ordinances. To want to repeal chapter, uh, six thirty, section six thirty point one-four of criminal misdemeanor prohibiting loitering in places where prostitution or solicitation for loop contact, conduct occurs. Uh, second one is section repealing section six fifty point zero four, a criminal misdemeanor prohibiting playing in the streets. Third one is repealing section six fifty-six point zero four, a criminal misdemeanor prohibiting bicycles in Riverfront Park during an organized event. Fourth one is, uh, sec- Fourth one is, uh, sec repealing section six fifty-eight-point-zero-three, a criminal misdemeanor prohibiting annoying persons. Uh, the fifth one is repealing section six fifty-eight-point-zero-six, a criminal misdemeanor providing that no person shall beg in any public place or go door-to-door requesting donations for personal gain. Um, the sixth one is repealing section six eighty-point-zero-three, criminal misdemeanor prohibiting profane language in a building or on any property adjacent to any building in the city occupied by public, private, or parochial school. Uh, seventh one is repealing section six eighty-point-zero-six, a criminal misdemeanor prohibiting borrowing money from a student at any school. And the eighth one is repealing section six ninety-six-point-zero-two, a criminal misdemeanor that no person shall carry any firearm, air rifle, bow and arrow, slingshot, crossbow, or other dangerous weapon in any public place subject to exceptions. Again, please raise your hands, um, using the functions that I outlined, um, star nine on the phone, Alt-Y on the Windows, Option-Y on, uh, on an Apple, um, and we will, uh, have an overview of these, uh, from a council member.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Spitzley is, uh, not feeling well this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Jackson to do a quick overview of the ordinances that, uh, he detailed in introduction a couple of weeks ago and have gone through committee. Uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So there's, this is the first batch of probably two sets of ordinances that came out of Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. This, these ones right here, all eight of them, were, um, basically no objection from the City Attorney's Office and the Chief Green from the Lansing Police Department. So I won't go into too many, too much details on each of them, but the first one, um, loitering in places where prostitution or solicitation for lewd conduct occurs or occurred. I would also say for each of these, you should read, if you're really curious, read the whole ordinance because just the one sentence for each one of these eight don't, doesn't necessarily cover, um, some of the problems in the ordinance and it goes on and on. Um, so again, you know, I can, I don't know if you want, Mr. President, for me to go through each one of them, but basically, I think the key points are is that, um, they either have not been prosecuted or enforced in a long time, if at all. And again, the City Attorney and the Police Chief has no objection to these being, um, repealed. Each committee member, it voted out three-O on all of these. And for the most part, each one of them, um, is not really related to public safety because the prohibited conduct or the crime itself is not a serious or dangerous crime. And it's up to us as councilpeople to make sure that we have ordinances that reflect the attitudes of the residents in the city. And I think in two thousand twenty-one, for all of these, for the most part, um, people don't necessarily want to see them enforced. So there is a couple of nuances. For the begging one, it's basically, um, unconstitutional to have a anti-panhandling ordinance. The Supreme Court in two thousand sixteen found that, uh, the First Amendment covers charitable appeals for funds and public, in public forums. So a person in a public forum, which is a sidewalk, a street, or the side of a street, um, can ask for charitable funds and it's unconstitutional to make a law against that. Additionally, with that same ordinance, um, Chief Green and the City Attorney informed us that they don't, they don't prosecute them because there's been a shift in the past to decriminalize this and just not enforce it. So between that and it being unconstitutional, begging is a little bit different. Um, and another thing to remem- to remember is that each one of these, so there is a underlying undesired conduct, for example, um, for example, playing in the street. Is, you don't want people to be in the street, stop in traffic, all those things, but for each one of these, there's another ordinance or state law that would prohibit, um, that thing from happening, for example. Playing in the streets is obstruction of a public right of ways is one example. Impeding traffic is another example. Those are both ordinances and state laws that would stop people from, or kids, anybody from being in the street and, and getting in the way. So that goes for each of them. I can talk about anyone, but for the most part, these were passed out of committee, three-O, with no objection to being repealed from the parties of City Attorney and the Police Chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Um, that, Mr. Clerk, that concludes the
Okay, so we are to the public comment portion. Uh, our first speaker is Ash. And then, once again, uh, after the first three minutes, uh, or the first speaker, we will be, uh, stopping, accepting additional sign-ups. So first speaker is Ash, followed by Loretta Stanway.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wholeheartedly support the move to repeal many of the ordinances for which you have scheduled public hearings tonight. Any law that prohibits, uh, limits of the public's free use of public space and/or land is suspect. That's the case with many of the ordinances for which the repeals are being proposed. In regards to chapter six thirty, section six thirty-fourteen specifically, which is a criminal misdemeanor prohibiting loitering in spaces where prostitution or solicitation for lewd conduct occurs, I have several things I would like to share, um, and say, uh, first of all, it's entirely subjective for an officer to decide which place is a place where sex work occurs. I doubt there's a database for that specific issue. And I suspect, I, I suspect the definition of such space occurs through word of mouth. That's not a good foundation for a law. Second, in regards to sex work itself, criminalizing sex work and the trappings of profession, such as criminalizing the spaces in which it is practiced, is a danger to public health. Not only does it fail to prevent sex work, it makes it more dangerous for the workers who, especially when working on the street, are often members of already vulnerable socioeconomic groups. It pushes the growth of the work to more dangerous corners of the city's landscape and threatens workers' lives. The following is a list of organizations that encourage the decriminalization of sex work and practices related to the profession of sex work, such as this law about spaces, um, UNAIDS, the United Nations Population Fund, the World Health Organization, the Independent Medical Journal, the Lancet, the Canadian Public Health Association, Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, so Human Rights Watch, Anti-Trafficking Organization, Lestrade International, the Anti-Trafficking Organization, Global Alliance Against Trafficking of Women, and the Sex Work Obviously Group, Global Network of Sex Work Projects. Um, criminalization and quasi-criminalization, such as that law, also make it difficult for sex workers to screen their potential clients, which again pushes the process into a more remote and thus more dangerous corners of the city. Sex workers do not only fear being caught and facing conviction, but are also subjected to police brutality and sexual assault. In the Sex Worker Project Study of Street-Based Sex Workers, nine percent of workers have been threatened by a police officer with violence. Eight percent have experienced physical violence at the hands of an officer. And seventeen percent of respondents described sexual harassment by police, including rape, sexual assault, and stalking. And if it happens in one place, it's not like it doesn't happen elsewhere. So, um, it's probably happening here as well. So this report also shared what happens when sex workers try to report the people who sexually violate them to the police, not the people who pay the money, the people that use the sex work profession as a cover for violating human beings, um, and, and assaulting them and raping them non-consensually. Um, and those who attempted to report violent crimes were told by the police and their complaints, uh, that, sorry, were told by the police that their complaints would not be accepted, that this is what they should expect and that they deserve all that they get. If you minimize sex worker contact with, contact with police officers, you, um, you must, if you can do that, you must. Um, these laws don't protect anyone. They're meant to stigmatize and punish those who step out of the labor and sexual mores to make ends meet for themselves. So laws such as chapter six thirty, section six thirty-fourteen are applicable. Their outcome helps no one. Please get rid of it. I mean, you already mentioned that, um, they're not being, they're not really enforcing this anyways, but, um, just, just to emphasize, like, this is a problem and, um, it's not like, it's not happening here too. So, please protect them.
Thank you. Um, next we have Loretta Stanaway and then Linda Appley.
Hello again. Uh, just briefly, this evening, there is a ordinance that's being discussed, which would permit the, uh, use of alcohol for certain activities or events. And in certain places, uh, within Francis Park, and personally, I would prefer not to see that approved, but I'm pretty sure it's going to happen. So what I would like to suggest is that because that is such a family-used park and, uh, I can imagine that, you know, just because you have a wedding or an event and it's supposed to take place within a certain area, if there's alcohol in play, that there are going to be people who will stray outside of that area and mingle in with the public as a whole. Uh, so I would like to suggest that there be some kind of a method by which whatever group or activity is hosting such an event is responsible for providing a means of enforcing those limitations. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Linda Appley and followed by Julia Kramer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, for the record, my name is Linda Appley and I reside in the City of Lansing. I want you to know in terms of, uh, public ordinance six-nine-six-dash-o-two, I'm opposed to eliminating this ordinance. Michigan has had to experience militants standing in front of the Capitol with loaded guns, intimidating our legislature and governor. A plot to kidnap the governor was discovered. Recently, a young man was murdered. This is a short distance from where I live. His killing was at the hand of an individual with a gun. A woman was killed by her sister-in-law. The weapon was a gun. Three lives were ruined. The dead, young women's, the woman's brother, and the killers. The state does not have an ordinance covering weapons in public places. We are not prevented from having our own ordinance governing weapons in public places. Revocation of this ordinance will place those carrying a weapon in danger. Police in other jurisdictions will fire their weapons in self-defense. You have no control over such action. With the purported legislation to restrict voting, you will be allowing those carrying weapons to intimidate people at polling places exercising their right to vote. You will be placing women at greater risk. Guns will be readily available to those seeking to do women bodily harm. The more guns with easier access means more people will be killed. I would like to point out that limited contact with the public has been had on the ordinance. You failed to contact the Ingle and Eaton County Prosecutor's Offices for input. You also failed to contact the Ingle County Sheriff's Office and the Eaton County Sheriff's Office for input. It appears this was rushed through with little thought given on who to contact or the potential impact on the residents of this city. I assure you, if hearings have been held in the open, we would have packed the venue. I would like to also indicate that I have had problems with sign-up. Others have attempted to sign up also for presentation and have not been able to do so. I would also like to indicate that it's not transparent when the Committee on Equity and Diversity is meeting. That appears to be some type of secret. In addition to that, I would like to say that, um, in terms of six-five, six-point-oh-five, I am opposed to remove this ordinance. You are setting up a situation where people will be killed in the parks when you let them come in, in terms of after-hours. In terms, rest assured that I personally will try and ensure that your voters know what your vote is on this matter in relationship to that, and that you will be the ones that are responsible for the deaths that will occur as a result of your actions.
Thank you. Next we have Julia Kramer, followed by Michael Lynn Jr.
Hello. Um, so I am curious about the, the, uh, the section that, um, Ms. Appley was just discussing. Uh, I believe it's six ninety-six-point-oh-two, um, because there, clearly, it's, it's in this list because it's not being currently enforced. And so there, and I, I kind of have to assume that there must be some other, um, some other ordinance on the books that is, is currently enforcing this. Um, but I guess I'm not sure. So I, I also share her concerns with that one, but I feel fairly confident based on, on Brian's explanation that it's because it's part of this list, that means that, um, this type of activity is, is being enforced or prohibited elsewhere, and that's why this ordinance is on this list. Um, so I feel pretty confident in, in that. Um, and with that said, I'd like to say that I, I do support, um, the repealing of this group of, um, of ordinances. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Michael Lynn Jr., followed by Sam Cho.
Hey, thanks a lot. First of all, I'm pretty, I'm positive Chief Green wrote Linda Appley's statement about how dangerous this is going to be if repealed these laws and ordinance that aren't being used right now. Uh, it sounds ridiculous. First of all, this is an open carry state. State law, uh, says that. You know, I don't understand why the city would be trying to impede on people's two-way, uh, privileges anyways, so that's not an issue. No more people are going to die because this law doesn't get repealed. The law's already in place. Uh, so I, I just, it just makes no sense whatsoever. Uh, Mayor, can't wait to see you out in the neighborhoods. You are a hard person to find. Hopefully, you, uh, you post that schedule. Uh, we'll meet you out there to pick up trash. Outside of that, this police budget, uh, which I believe is in the fiscal year budget, we still don't have anything defunding police and, and stopping these crimes. In the last week, we lost a sixteen-year-old and a nineteen-year-old, uh, to, to homicide. Uh, we know there's an issue out here. Uh, again, there's nothing in place. We're begging and pleading for city money to put towards advanced peace. Uh, when we have actual plate people here that are doing this work, I'm not against advanced peace, but I think that we can't put all of our eggs in a basket here. We've got to start thinking outside the box. Uh, none of that's happening. We got, uh, you know, forty-some million dollars going to the police department, uh, to clean up crimes. And you know, the only thing that I can think is, as sad as this is, when this crime starts knocking on your door, you don't come begging to Mike Lynn to figure it out for you. Not to say you would, but most likely, y'all know the person who was at your door. Most likely, I'll know the people that are doing this shooting. So what I'm saying by that is, because it's not at your door, cleaning the streets of trash and using police to do that is more important than cleaning up the guns and stopping this violence and putting money back into community organizations so that we can get these kids to stop doing this type of thing. So until you guys start focusing on that, this crime is only going to creep back into your areas, back into your neighborhoods, until eventually it's one of your children. And Andy Shore, you should be really, you should be really concerned with this, given the fact that both of your kids go to, go to Everett High School. You should be really concerned that the kids that I keep telling you about, that we need money to stop from doing bad things, are going to be in the same classroom with your children. Walking out of school, the shore name is not all that represented in Lansing in, in a good way. I would be concerned about those type of things. So that's the concern that we should have. With this city budget, it's stopping this type of crime so it doesn't end up at your door, like none of us want it to be at your door or anybody else's door. But every morning, I got to wake up and hear about another kid in the neighborhood who's been killed by gun violence because this city council and this mayor care more about BS than actually fixing these issues. So please put this in the budget. Take some money away from this police department, some of these millions, and put it towards actually doing something to help this community.
Thank you. And, uh, our final speaker is Sam Cho.
Howdy, can you guys hear me now? Sorry, I was muted. Uh, so the ordinances, uh, I can't speak on all of them specifically, of course, uh, because it does take some significant time to, uh, speak of each one and research each one. Uh, but as a packet, uh, I would like to, uh, retort against, uh, Linda and Loretta and say that they, uh, work specifically on making Lansing less classist, right? And they're commendable to pass as a packet, even if we can't speak about them individually. Uh, all these laws are problematic. They implicitly target the working class when they do not explicitly do so. Uh, and they're also phrased subjectively instead of actionally. Uh, again, going back to what Ash said about how do you define a place where prostitution is solicited? Uh, and, and how do you keep that up to date, right? Uh, the broader prerogative is that these are fluid tools that are used by police forces to grasp at ordinances when they are harassing residents. A lot of these laws can be applied, uh, pretty much at the, uh, at the whim of an individual officer, uh, instead of being an immutable cornerstone of how everyone treats one another, uh, which is what laws should be. Uh, the punishments need to come after the crime, not fo- not before. So all of these arguments that I'm hearing, uh, they don't really do anything because they're saying, we need to stop this before it happens. Uh, and that's just not, it's not a good way to, to run America historically, uh, or contemporarily, of course. Um, there's always going to still be laws about intimidation, conduct, bodily harm, drunkenness. Uh, these are not allowing those things, right? But these are making them, uh, more direct, right? Um, so again, I, I see no reasons why these laws should not pass. Uh, I'm also very sure that Councilperson Bets will preserve his preserve his own interest in passing legislation decriminalizing annoying persons. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker. We are to the referral of the public hearings. All eight referrals.
Yeah, for some reason, we have some hands up right now. So, Jim.
Since we're in the public record, um, I want to make sure that uh we do get some comments. I want to supplement what Councilmember Jackson said. We've had lively debate about many of these ordinances in Patricia Spitzley's Diversity Committee. For the most part, um, I have to agree that some of these don't make sense to keep on the books. But I just was going to wait until we got back to the committee, but uh with three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, right, there are reasons we're we're not supporting keeping those on the books. But I want to bring to your attention number six, which has been the subject of a lot of jokes about the word annoy. It says willfully annoy. And there are cases that would say that is constitutional. I would point out, for example, there would be nothing on the books for a person harassing another person, whether it be a male harassing a female or a female harassing a male or vice versa on a public street. It's not stalking. I think many people have experienced this. Uh, there would be nothing on the books to actually uh be able to prosecute someone. I just want to raise that issue. Um, the other one is number ten. Even though there's open carry, uh, number ten covers other things than open carry. Other than rifles, by the way, or firearms, uh, bows and arrows, slingshots, so on and so forth. It's also subject to exceptions in the state law. So I just wanted to put that on the record. You know, and say something now or forever hold your peace, whatever. Okay, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Councilmember Dunbar.
Microphone here. Um, one, I wanted to point out that all the agendas for all council meetings and all the times for all council meetings, committees and otherwise are at lansingmi.gov forward slash agenda center. So if you're ever wondering when these meetings are, they're not held in secret. The agendas are there. You can um download the minutes from prior meetings, et cetera. So lansingmi.gov forward slash agenda center, all one word. Um, the other thing was is um I was I was hoping that maybe Councilmember Jackson could speak to what the rationale was for that three sixty, if I'm remembering the number correctly. No, I'm sorry.
Eight ordinances there, Kathy. Which one are you talking about?
Six ninety six oh two, the number ten.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you briefly. So that's the one um that reads basically that no person shall carry any firearm, air rifle, bow and arrow, slingshot, crossbow, or other dangerous weapon in any public space subject to exceptions. And here the point is subject to exceptions, basically. I mean, I, and what we talked about in committee, and Jim, I mean, we can go back and forth a little bit on this if you want, but you have to follow the Michigan state law, and Michigan has its inclusive gun laws that tells you when and how a person can carry a weapon, if they can and can't, what they have to do to be registered. It's a complete it's a complete law that covers all of gun-related things. So Lansing shouldn't be able to say, well, actually, we can restrict gun laws even more places on where you can carry or can't carry. Just second brief. And for the record, I'm not a gun person. I don't own a gun. I don't like guns. I wouldn't mind if less people had guns. But at the same time, I recognize that the state law is what governs how and where we can carry. In committee, we did talk about, well, what about crossbows? Because the state law doesn't necessarily cover crossbows, and I don't want to speak for uh Councilwoman Spitzley because she's not here, but she took exception to crossbow just because her son hunts, and she was saying, what if he's carrying his weapon from the trunk to a trunk or something in Lansing? And again, for for the weapons, you can't point a gun at anybody. That's a felonious assault. You can't wave your gun around in the air because that's brandishing. So those are other statutes that are already in place to control how people carry. But as far as the rules for them to carry, the Michigan state law covers that. So the fact that we have an ordinance that says you can't do these things except where prohibited by law, that except where prohibited by law is basically everything the state law says, which also says they run the show when it comes to guns.
So we can certainly talk about this uh if they come back out of committee. Um, there's another opportunity to discuss this. I thank Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Jackson, and the City Attorney for raising some of those issues, as well as the folks who brought public comment to them this evening. I don't know if we lost the clerk.
I I'm still here.
Okay, very good. Uh, we are now on to referral of those public hearings.
Yeah, so referral of the eight public hearings.
Oh, can I do them all at once?
Sure.
Send them to the Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, please. Equity, diversity, inclusion, excuse me.
Okay, then we are to the consent agenda.
All right, um, I believe uh, is there anything that needs to come off the consent agenda? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Okay, looks like we're good. Uh, Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So we have two items on the consent agenda tonight. First, have a resolution approving uh an external auditor for the Lansing Board of Water and Light. Uh, that selection is Baker Tilly, and we also have uh a transfer of the Delta Grand Drain to the city of Lansing. So that means that I would move the consent agenda.
Consent agenda has been moved. Would the clerk please call the roll?
On the consent agenda, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days. The consent agenda is adopted, and that takes us to uh resolutions, and the first one is a tribute for Fair Housing Month.
Mr. Vice President, I'm going to hand the gavel over to you.
All right, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just a real quick resolution um from the council designating the month of April twenty twenty-one as Fair Housing Month in Lansing, city of Lansing. Um, it is uh in recognition of fifty-three years of the Fair Housing Act enacted April eleventh, nineteen sixty-eight, so fifty-three years ago yesterday. So I would move the resolution.
All right. Thank you, President Spatafor. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, uh, Clerk Swob, would you take the roll, please? Um, we're struggling, Chris. Um, you're you're kind of in and out. Or is it just me, President Spatafor?
No, it's not you.
Councilmember Garza. Uh, on the on the resolution, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Um, seven years, zero days. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, we are, our next one is the appointment of Eric Brewer Brewer as the internal auditor.
Uh, Mr. Vice President, would you like to uh put a period on this drama?
Um, I would love to. Uh, so as as folks are well aware, uh, this this position of uh city council internal internal auditor, sorry, has been actually vacant since January of two thousand and twenty, and that's when Eric Brewer, uh, who had intended at that time to move back to Tennessee, uh, left his employment with the city of Lansing. We struggled. Let me tell you, mightily to fill the position. Uh, it wasn't um for a lack of, you know, noble effort. We want to thank HR. We want to thank our office manager. We want to thank law. We want to thank, you know, um, President Spatafor was tremendous. The Personnel Committee was tremendous, uh, but we struggled mightily to fill the position. COVID nineteen, having kind of changed um Mr. Brewer's plans, um, he actually came on uh with us uh January of this pa- of this year, sorry, uh, as an independent contractor, uh, as we continue to work, uh, to try to attract uh and hire an employee into this position. Uh, but again, COVID nineteen made everything very, very um difficult. As we um continue to struggle uh to fill the position, Eric's situation kind of continued to evolve, and he has since decided to stay in Michigan. Um, and he has expressed interest in coming back um to city council as a full-time employee. Um, that precipitated some conversations with law and with HR um regarding the process moving forward. If we were to actually move forward with hiring him back on, um, would we have to go, uh, as an example, back through uh the interview process? Uh, because he previously served as a city council internar- uh, I'm sorry, internal auditor, and because he possesses um the qualifications required for the position, uh, we can in fact hire uh Eric back without posting the position uh and going back through the interview process. Um, so we are hoping um that we can gain support to hire Mr. Brewer back uh as our internal auditor, as a full-time employee of the Lansing City Council. So the resolution uh in front of you guys does a couple of things. Number one, I mean, we're going to actually have to amend the hiring date. If you take a look at the resolution, it actually states that um the the hiring date would be April thirteenth. Um, the contract, um, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. The contract that we're going to need to enter into with Mr. uh Eric Brewer is not yet finalized. We have law working on that uh in President Spatafor and myself. Per this resolution, I have the uh, we'll have the authority to move forward uh with executing that contract. Um, and the reason that we need uh an at-will employment contract uh for a one-year term as opposed to, you know, kind of adhering to our nor- normal process and the council rules, uh, is that through negotiations, it was made clear that um Eric has some unique personal and family um circumstances uh that necessitate a little bit of front-loading of some of his vacation time. Uh, and so what this um, and and we actually, we met with law last week. We met with HR last week. Um, we tried to find really the best um avenue to to kind of move the ball down the field. Um, and it was their opinion uh that a one-year um at-will employment contract, he will be a city of Lansing city council uh employee. Uh, he is not, he will not remain an independent contractor through this um uh through this contract, uh, but that this was the best um kind of avenue. Uh, so again, if you look in the resolution, um, there are a few things in terms of provisions that are included. Rate of pay, that is the rate of pay that Eric left his employment with the city uh at. Um, we will um continue to negotiate those fringe benefits, which include uh the issuing, the issuance, I'm sorry, of vacation leave uh up or I should say, uh, front-loaded. Uh, and then also, one thing that we have law looking at uh right now is um his placement in the appropriate retirement system. So DBS versus uh DCS. Um, I I believe based on the communication that I've received thus far, um, that he will most likely um go into the defined contribution system. Uh, but again, uh, we have law looking at that. Uh, President Spatafor or Mr. Smirka, if I missed anything or if I mischaracterized anything, please um weigh in before I move uh this resolution.
No, I think you, I think you've done a phenomenal job. I just want to say Eric in the, since he's come back on board, Mr. Brewer, excuse me, since he's come back on board, we've acted in sort of supervisory role as well as 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 an independent contractor, and he has done exemplary work, and I'm hoping that we can put some signatures to this to this contract sooner than later, um, knowing that there are a few word hurdles we have to, we have to climb yet, but I'm very excited to have him on board uh permanently and full-time with the city.
And Mr. Smirka, anything to add?
As I learn how to use this move button. Um, no, we'll be meeting with uh Mr. Brewer within the next couple of days. Um, it's really just uh fine-tuning the contract and dealing with the retirement system issue, which you may have solved just now. So that's where we are.
All right, I appreciate that. So uh President Spatafor, I've moved the resolution. Um, however, I, with the amendment of, I believe, May first as a hiring date.
Very good. It's been moved with a May first hiring date. Um, is there any questions, comments, clarifications needed? All right, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, on the resolution with the May first amendment, it's number Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley. I'm sorry, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Uh, seven years, zero days. The resolution adopted. And we are to uh send a show cause hearing for Make Safer Demolish, uh, three fourteen.
Our president, uh, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is send this show cause hearing consideration of orders to make safer demolish three fourteen Bingham. That is a fire uh damage structure. The original tag date was November second of two thousand and seventeen. Uh, it was submitted into Make Safer Demolish process back in March first of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the SEV on this property is seventy-five hundred. The land value is about six thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, and the estimate for repairs are ninety thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. The the, just make sure I'm not missing anything. The uh, the owner has been given multiple extensions, has pulled required permits. However, there's been no activity or action on those permits. Uh, electrical permit had a service approval back in November twenty 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 to turn the power on, and no other work has been done. We've had a couple uh in favor of demolished comments from the neighbors uh adjacent to that property. And uh with that, I uh, unless I'm missing anything, I would move the resolution.
Resolution has been moved. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, if the clerk will please call the roll.
So in the show cause hearing, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Member Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days. The resolution is adopted, and we are to uh send a public hearing for the Glenburn Commons.
Councilmember Dunbar, our favorite topic together.
So, we do this every year, and I'll tell the story again as if it's never been told. Um, we have a subdivision that was originally built as standalone homes within a condominium complex. Um, they were planted as condos, and there was a common space in the center of this condo uh development that was intended to be public space for those in the condo association. And apparently, a few years into the uh existence of the condo association, the president and the treasurer ran off together with all the money and uh left the association defunct. And so this plot of land in the center, which is called Glenburn Commons, which is down in the neighborhood of Lansing, that is in Eaton County, uh, has no plan um or mechanism for maintenance. And so we have an arrangement with the neighborhood to perform the grass mowing and uh trash removal. And then we bill back to the neighbors collectively through a special assessment to cover the cost of maintaining that parcel. And that we are into a contract year currently, we renew it every year. Um, and this is based on the expenses from last year. We always bill after that, um, and then divide it out amongst everyone. So this is uh doing that for last year, and this is setting the rule if I'm my reading this correctly. Hold on. We setting the public hearing for this for the neighbors. I just lost my screen here on my agenda.
Yeah, just a second. Let me uh, I'm looking at my here. It is setting the uh special, I'm sorry, the hearing.
Hearing for it, yes.
Which will be on, the date needs to be filled in, but I believe we only need, we are talking about this, it needs to be on the twenty-sixth. Is there any reason not to do twenty-six?
No. And so then what will happen is they're going to, um, the Public Service Department is going to mail to everyone, um, the amount that they'll be assessed, and then they will be told to um that they can come before us during that. to everyone um the amount that they'll be assessed, and then they will be told to um that they can come before us during that uh hearing to challenge or debate the the assessment, and then based on our outcomes from that, we will set the rule.
Okay. So we have a public hearing for the twenty-sixth, is that correct?
Yes.
Moved by Councilmember Dunbar. Any questions on the Glenburn Commons assessment? It's here, I think she said it, but just for clarification, it's forty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents per occupied parcel. Okay, seeing no further questions, uh with the clerk, please call the roll. Chris, you're the clerk.
He's froze.
Oh.
No, I'm just very still.
Wake up, it's not a dream. You're the clerk.
Uh sorry, I forgot I was mute. Um for uh setting the public hearing for Glenburn up to the twenty-sixth, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Seven years zero days, the resolution is adopted. We are to setting the public hearing for the CDVG annual action plan.
Uh Vice President Hussein.
Sure. Uh briefly, this pr- this um pertains, sorry, to entitlement funds for community development, block grant home and uh emergency solution grants programs um that we receive through um the Department on Housing and Urban Development. Uh we actually go through this process. This is an annual action process uh where the city council, you know, holds a public hearing on the annual action plan um that we eventually submit to HUD, and then we consider subsequent approvals. So again, this is something that we do every year. Uh this process is part of kind of a more comprehensive citizen participation plan. Um and and it was told us earlier tonight by Mr. Doc O'Hanlon of Economic Development and Planning that um they've had a few hearings and and some public input on this already. In any event, with regards to community development, block grant funds, um the proposed plan, um I think the the number is two million fifty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars. Uh and this pertains to um, you know, programs that deal with single-family residential rehab, uh public improvements, rental rehab, things of that nature. Uh with regards to home funds, uh the plan proposes seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Uh and this uh deals with, my memory serves me right, new um affordable housing, um and then down payment assistance uh to eligible recipients. And then lastly, with regards to E ESG funds, sorry, um this plan proposes a hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh it was discussed, this is a decrease of about one percent or two thousand dollars uh over last year's plan. Uh but this is used for street outreach, rapid rehousing, uh and things of that nature. So again, what we're doing tonight is setting the public hearing uh that would be set for April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, uh so this resolution be approved. Uh with that being said, I would move the um setting of the public here.
Resolution has been moved. Is there any further discussion on the CBG action plan? We're good, seeing none. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Um Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Seven years zero days, uh the resolution is adopted, and we are to the setting the hearing for the budgets, city budget.
Uh Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So this pertains to the uh recommended executive budget. Uh that was presented to council originally on March twenty-second. Uh we did have budget presentations earlier tonight as part of uh Committee of the Whole. We will have a series of meetings uh over the next several weeks uh to vet and consider the budget uh and any potential amendments to the budget. Uh per the charter, we must um approve the budget by the third Monday in May. Uh and so what we would be doing tonight is approving, um I'm sorry, setting a public hearing for May third uh two thousand and twenty-one at seven PM. Again, this includes um affiliated to agency budgets. Uh this includes capital improvement plan, city fee changes and the like. Uh President Spatafor, I don't think wants me to go over um Jake Brower's entire presentation from earlier tonight, so I will end with simply saying we will um take a look at this again on April twenty-sixth. Um and and I I would assume um folks should be expecting a lot of engagement from their city council representatives, particularly their ward representatives as we move through this process. Uh so with that being said, I would move the setting of the public hearing for uh May third, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Um is there any questions or comments on this? Uh just as noted in Cal, we will be bringing in the treasurer next time around to talk about revenues, projections, and things like that. So um seeing no further comments on this, let's take a roll call, please, on setting the public hearing on the City of Lansing FY twenty-two budget.
Okay, on the hearing, Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven years zero days, uh the public hearing is set. And so I'm gonna need one half a second here uh for the introduction, six. We are two ordinances for introduction. Um and we have uh Councilmember uh Jackson introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter six twenty-two, section six twenty-two point zero one, a criminal misdemeanor under the General Offenses Code of the Codified Ordinances to eliminate drug paraphernalia. The ordinances uh wrote a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. This is um an ordinance that we looked at for repeal. Basically, you read the whole thing. It says a person shall not use, possess, anything that has to do with drug paraphernalia. And these are items that are commonly known to either ingest, uh a smoke bong, a needle, different things to use drugs. So we had a nice discussion about this in committee, and some of the points, first, um I believe Chief of Police said that they do use this ordinance. Um and the city attorney also was concerned about this because if it's not a crime, then if someone's arrested and they have a needle on them, you may have to s- give them their property back. Uh Councilwoman Dunbar mentioned that it would, just like other things, it would go to their property. And there could be other things to talk about as far as exchanging it with a clean needle, but that wasn't fully developed. But either way, we also discussed how this would be a criminal act possessing drug paraphernalia, even if a person does not have any drugs on them. And I will also note that it is still illegal to possess drugs, use drugs that are illegal, um sell drugs, all those different things are are still illegal. But whether a person has drug paraphernalia on them, we, as a committee, um move this out three oh for a few reasons, but one, we think that the City of Lansing should promote safe needle exchanges and not criminalize possessing needles and other things. And also that um this possessing paraphernalia is not a crime worthy of jail and probation and all the things that come with it. There was um an assistant city attorney mentioned that they could possibly have a benefit for having this because if a person has paraphernalia, then they could get arrested and then be put on probation where they could receive services for their potential drug problem. And again, the committee talked about that and ultimately, um correct me if I'm wrong, but thought that the crime of possessing the drug uh would be more than necessary to prohibit what we're trying to stop. So that was this ordinance that passed three oh, and there was a lot of discussion about it.
Hey, stand by. We're on introduction, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
And I'm not looking, I don't see public hearing resolutions in these.
You know, uh we, so we got, my office got the wrong um and dragged into the um council packet. So the resolutions are setting the hearings for April twenty-sixth.
Okay, I just want to make sure for all eight, the uh the upcoming eight.
All of these, yes.
They're all.
We got the wrong, it's, I think it's adjusting to the new, the clerk thing. We got the passage ones dragged in. We've got, put them in the right heading, but we apparently on files.
I just want the council to be clear that in your, in what other, in a version of the packet you may have in front of you, it says that these are on passage, but it's just introduction saying the public hearings for each of them for the twenty-sixth um as they've come out of committee. So um Councilmember Jackson, if you'd like to move the resolution, setting the public hearing for item twenty, and then we'll do the same for items twenty-one through twenty-seven.
Move the public hearing for, to repeal chapter six twenty-two oh one for year twenty-six.
Thank you. There is a proper motion before us, is there further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll on setting the public hearing.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Seven years zero days.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Jackson.
I have to read.
I'm sorry.
On your rules, I have to read, and Council ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter six thirty, six thirty point one-two, a criminal misdemeanor under the General Offenses Code of the Codified Ordinances to eliminate loitering places where controlled substances or drug paraphernalia is sold, used, et cetera. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
Councilmember Jackson, to the resolution.
Yes, thank you. Um so this, we talked about in committee, and this one, the city attorney ended up not having an objection to here. This is loitering in places where, again, drugs are sold, used, um has been used, dispensed, furnished, given away, and that could be a house, um a lawn, a street, a alley, a yard, an apartment store. Basically, any place that drugs have been stored, used, given away, et cetera, a person's not supposed to be in. And from my understanding, this one doesn't get prosecuted often. But don't worry, because right below it, one ordinance that is not being repealed is frequenting places where controlled substances are maintained, stored, et cetera. Not loitering in places. So frequenting would be maybe a step up for um the conduct of buying, selling, and trading drugs, because if someone frequents it, they go there and back more a few times. Here, a person could uh loiter, which is not necessarily dangerous, not criminal. Uh if that person is buying, selling, using drugs, they will be arrested and prosecuted for that crime. But loitering in a place, house or whatever, um our committee thought that this was not a type of conduct that's worthy of criminal prosecution, and that there are other um laws on the books that would stop people from, well, if at least um prosecute people for using and abusing drugs, but not necessarily being in a place for that. So it passed three oh, and I, sorry, I don't recall what Chief Green said about this, but I don't think he had objection to this one. But I will remind everybody that there is six thirty thirteen that says you can't frequent a place doing the same things. And we would set this for a public hearing for April twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Uh is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to set this for April twenty-sixth.
Thank you very much. Um there's proper motion for us. Is any, what, any further questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Seven years zero days, the public hearing is set. Our next one is uh Councilmember Jackson introduced ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter six fifty, section six fifty point zero five, a criminal misdemeanor under the General Offenses Code of the Codified Ordinances to eliminate parental responsibility.
Uh Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So, no, we don't want to eliminate all parental responsibility, but as far as six fifty oh five, if you read section B, it says no parent of a minor shall encourage or allow such minor to be in any street, highway, alley, park, vacant lot, or other public place in violation of six fifty oh one, which is playing in the streets, and proof of, wait, is that playing in streets? Uh nope, that's curfew, sorry. But proof that a minor was upon or in any street, highway, alley, or park, vacant lot, otherwise unsupervised, shall be a prima facie evidence that the minor's parents allowed or encouraged the minor to violate such section. So basically, if a kid is caught out after curfew, then the mom or the dad faces criminal prosecution because the fact that they were out in any st- park or street or anything would say that the parent knew and is guilty of it. There was no objection to eliminate this one. Um and it passed six three oh out of committee. And I would move to set it for a public hearing April twenty-third.
Thank you very much. Uh proper motion before us to set the public hearing. If the clerk would please call the roll. I'm sorry, seeing no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Seven years zero days, uh the public hearing is set. And next we have uh Councilmember Jackson introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan for the purpose of amending chapter six fifty-six section six fifty-six point zero five to provide that the penalty for violation of this ordinance shall be a municipal infraction. So this one is not a repeal. It is a making it a municipal infraction.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. City Attorney, yes.
I have a feeling, uh we had a lot of uh glitches with laser fish during this time. And I'm looking at twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. And I recall the committee asking us to amend those ordinances to civil infractions, and we did that and sent it up, and so it's not, really, I don't think it's the intent to have these repealed, but amended to civil infractions if I'm, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Dunbar, am I correct on that?
Yes, and only twenty-three reads repeal. The other two read amend.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, I was just looking at twenty-three. Okay. Sorry.
So um the resol- there's nothing, I forgot that laser feature was down for like all of Friday and parts of Thursday, so I know there's a lot of errors that may have happened. So is it, is what's in front of us?
Agenda might, I believe the agenda may have mischaracterized them, whereas the reduction and the materials, the ordinance in the packet is, says it's amending it.
Okay, because I'm looking at six fifty-six oh five in my packet, and it says to repeal. It also says for immediate passage, so I that, I know that's not correct, but.
Okay.
So should, is it, should we pause on twenty-three?
These should all re- be, these should all be amended to make them civil infractions instead of misdemeanors. That, that's what the proper uh thing that came out of the committee is.
Was, right, but that's not what's in front, I, at least it's not what's in front of me. So should twenty-three, Mr. Clerk, should we pause on that until the twenty-sixth and reset the public hearing?
Yeah, I think that makes sense to redo the introduction on this, and I apologize for that.
No, I, I, I forgot that. There was a whole city, for those of you following along at home, there was a citywide outage on our document management system, and it created a lot of havoc putting this agenda together. So I appreciate everyone who's trying to make it work. Um, Councilmember Jackson, if you're okay, we're gonna skip twenty-three because it's not accurate in the packet nor online um for now, and we'll come back. Um, Councilmember Jackson, if you're okay, we're going to skip twenty three because it's not accurate in the packet nor online, um, for now and we'll come back to it on the twenty sixth to, to set the public hearing then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great. Mr. Clerk, if we could.
Can we clarify, are there others that have the same?
It looks like, uh, the city attorney pointed out that twenty six and twenty seven were also supposed to be amended. And if you, I think, looking at them, they're both amendments as well. Oh, you know what? No, the header got changed, but the, but the actual ordinance didn't. So uh, um, twenty six and twenty seven are both inaccurate as well. So it looks like we'll just have to go with twenty four and twenty five. Councilmember Jackson, I apologize for that error.
No problem.
So it looks like.
Twenty four then.
Yeah, twenty four and twenty five look like they're okay and then the other two are not. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Oh, number twenty four, um. Councilmember Jackson introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan for the purpose of amending chapter six sixty four, section six sixty four point zero one by repealing subsection B prohibiting loud and boisterous conduct. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. So the, the loud and boisterous provision is a subsection of six six four oh one that reads disorderly, fighting, loud and boisterous, breach of peace. And as a committee, we talked about this, I, the police chief, I believe he and the city attorney objected to repealing this one. Um, they, the police chief cited that, um, loud and boisterous is used to possibly separate people by arresting somebody if there's people that are not fist fighting and, but are just creating an overall disturbance. I countered, um, that point and pointed out subsection A, no person shall create or engage in any disturbance or fight in a public place, which I believe, and I think we had some conversation that that no person shall create disturbance would also loud and boisterous conduct could be um, prohibited under no disturbances. And the fact that we have no person shall do loud and boisterous conduct, I think is problematic because it forces our officers to use their subjective discretion as far as what conduct is loud and boisterous, who's loud and boisterous and who is not, when instead they have under that same ordinance, the ability to still arrest and separate people under, shall not create any disturbance or fight in public place. So the amendment would be only to strike letter B, which is, um, shall not disturb public peace and quiet in a loud and boisterous conduct. This only passed two to one out of committee. Uh, Councilwoman Spitzley wanted to keep this one and we had a lot of discussion. This one is prosecuted in our district court. Um, I don't remember exactly how frequently, but it is prosecuted. There is, there was some explanation that this could be used as a plea reduction uh, charge where someone who's maybe charged with a song battery could plead down to loud and boisterous. But, um, at the same time, they are the same penalty. They're both misdemeanors. And there are other, um, ordinances, including this very same one, no person shall creator or engage in any disturbance in a public place that would do the same thing. So taking out loud and boisterous basically helps reduce the officer's, um, load as far as trying to determine who's loud and boisterous and what they should do about it. When instead they can focus on who is creating or engaging in a disturbance or fight. So it just strikes that and we would move it for a public hearing, April twenty six.
Mr. Uh, is that a motion there? Uh.
This for a public hearing, April twenty six.
Thank you. Uh, motion has been made.
Ms. Hagan does have her hand up.
Lisa, Jim, Lisa.
Lisa, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was just reviewing the packet on this ordinance as well and it is not correct. Um, the content is generally correct that six sixty four oh one sub B would be eliminated. But we need to do it in terms of the entire section six sixty four point oh one. And so the packet did not get updated with a corrected version. And so I just wanted to alert the council to that fact.
Wasn't there also civil infraction here, Lisa?
There is, it's subsection C, which would be renumbered to subsection B with the change. That's part of the reason why it all needs to be in one ordinance to, to keep it kind of clean and, um, so that it still makes sense.
Councilmember Jackson, can I have you withdraw your motion and on this one then, since it's the, actually the ordinance itself is not accurate. We've been, we've been doing all right with if the resolution wasn't there, but with the ordinance itself was incorrect.
Yeah, um, I would draw that, but it sounds like we still may, it's still may need repealed and I would set the public hearing for that instead of an amendment. Is that?
Uh, I, I'm not comfortable moving forward if we don't know what we're actually voting on. So I would, I would ask that you would, if you can't, I mean, we can take a vote on it. Certainly, I'm not going to say no, but it sounds like this is inaccurate in our packet. Um, if, if we can, we can, everything we haven't voted on, we'll just roll over to the twenty sixth agenda after they've had some time to make sure everything that came out of committee is in front of us.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, can someone double check item twenty five before we go down that road?
Council President, item twenty five, there should be correct, from what I can tell.
It's correct.
Yes, it, item twenty five is just, uh, straight with you.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Jackson, sorry about that. Uh, your last one for now and then we'll come back to the, the ones we had to skip over for on the twenty sixth. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So this last one is.
Let me read into the record though, sorry.
Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Make sure I've got the right one, six sixty four point zero two. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Jackson introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal chapter six sixty four, section six sixty four point zero two, a criminal misdemeanor under the general offenses code of the qualified ordinances to eliminate that no person shall disturb without lawful authority, any public summon, assembly or meeting of persons. The ordinance is referred to the, you know, read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
All right, Councilmember Jackson, now you're up.
Thank you. So this one is, we had a lot of discussion about and the premise for the repeal is that people have the right to counter protest and especially in Lansing, for example, if the Klan came and marched down Michigan Avenue, there might be people there on the streets shouting them down and yelling at them, which would be technically a disturbance of an assembly. Now, we didn't go too far into that, but people do have the, you know, right to counter protest, to be in public spaces like sidewalks and stuff to say what they want to say, as long as it doesn't incite a riot and all those things. But the committee was also concerned, well, what about people who will come into council and disturb our public um, assembly? But if they did that, they could still be arrested for trespassing. Um, because council, for example, we have our own council rules that says, you know, you can only speak when you can and for how long. So if somebody, um, violated those rules and was asked to leave and then didn't leave, then they would be trespassing and they could be arrested. So for our council meetings, we'll be, we'll be okay. And that's pretty much the same for other meetings. Um, people still can't obstruct public right of ways, people still can't trespass. That's staying after they're told to leave. You still can't jostle, which is like crowding people and bumping into them. And of course you can't assault and batter anybody either. So, um, I believe that the city attorney did have, I don't, I don't recall exactly, um, how strong the objection was, but we did have some conversation. Ultimately, it passed three oh because the committee felt that, um, disturbing an assembly is not, uh, a criminal matter worthy of being arrested and possibly jailed and all the other things. Instead, there's other crimes that if people did while they disturbed the assembly, that could be prosecuted, which ultimately cuts down on what people don't want to see, which is just people coming to meetings and acting crazy and yelling and making a scene. Still can't do that, but, um, I was worried that this one infringes on constitutional rights. Again, First Amendment in public places, including to counter protest. And ultimately it passed and I would move this for a public hearing, April twenty six.
Thank you. That's proper motion before us. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? If the clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, I'm setting the public hearing on item number twenty five. Um, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Seven na- yays, zero nays, the public hearing is set. Um, next, uh, we have Councilmember Dunbar introduced an ordinance of the city, city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the city of Lansing classified ordinances by amending chapter two eighty, section two eighty point zero three to provide that the elected officer compensation commission shall meet in even numbered years to determine the compensation of elected officers in the manner provided in chapter two eighty. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on City Operations.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. This is just really simple. It's taking it from, um, even years to odd years. So, um, the elected officers compensation commission meets um, to determine elected officers compensation so that we're not making our own um, decisions about pay. And, um, the proposal here is to move it to, uh, um, I'm sorry, shall meet in even numbered years when there, it's not, it's outside of the election process.
And move the resolution for the hearing on the twenty sixth?
Sorry, I should probably do that part two. Yes, I move that it be introduced, um, for a public hearing on the twenty sixth.
Thank you. There's proper motion forces or any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the clerk will cause a roll.
Hearing, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Betts.
Yes.
Or Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, the public hearing is set. And that takes us to the final order and ordinance for introduction. Uh, Councilmember Dunbar introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan for the purpose of amending the Lansing certified ordinances by amending chapter six oh eight, section six oh eight point zero four to allow for consumption of alcoholic beverages within certain locations at Francis Park. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on City Operations.
Councilmember Dunbar, take it away.
Thank you. Um, you, you can take it with me too, Mr. Spatafor. We, we kind of did this. Um, so, uh, basically what this is, is we have a lot of folks who, um, who want to have weddings and special events at Francis Park and, um, don't, uh, when they find out that there is a prohibition on alcohol. And so this is to amend that ordinance to add, um, Francis Park. And it also, um, it also makes it so that when you, when you rent that facility uh, for a wedding, you, you would have to have an alcohol, you'd have to have a permit, special event permit. It would be, I believe, the way that you wrote it, um, Councilmember Spatafor, if they rent out, um, the pavilion, it comes with the rose garden and the overlook because we can't have competing, we shouldn't have competing events um, in the park on the same day. And in those areas, they would be allowed to consume during that event. Um, given that they followed all procedures to get the license and it was served appropriately in the park. Um, I'm going to add to this that this is just the introduction and setting the public hearing. We are going to have another committee meeting where this will be discussed the week before the twenty six. I believe it's on the twenty first, um, at the city operations, um, committee. And we are also, um, extending an invite out to the Francis Park neighborhood to, um, give comment and also attend that meeting via Zoom. Uh, so we will be posting that on the neighborhood page and obviously anyone else in the city is welcome to comment as well. But it's specific, um, we want to hear from them because it's their part.
Okay.
Did I get it?
You did. And I, did you move there? I think you did. You moved early. That's right. You did it early. Okay, so there's a proper motion before us saying the public hearing on this ordinance change for the twenty sixth of April. Any further discussion on the public hearing? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
On setting the hearing, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Seventy eight zero nays, the, uh, resolution is adopted to set the hearing. Uh, that takes us to speaker registration for public, uh, city government related matter. Any, uh, item relative to the operation or governance of the city. Uh, speakers will have up to three minutes and like in the earlier section, please, uh, you do need to raise your hand, uh, by star nine on a phone. Uh, clicking the raise hand icon, pressing alt Y at the same time on a Windows or option Y at the same time on an Apple. We will accept additional raised hands, uh, until the first speaker, uh, is done or at least, uh, allowing three minutes, uh, in. Um, you also can be raising your hand while we are doing the referral items and council member comments. So please begin raising your hands if you wish to address the city council, uh, on public comment on general, uh, items. And, uh, in the meantime, we are to report some city officers, boards and commissions.
Hey, uh, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I'm sorry. I would move that all items be considered as read and full and that the appropriate referrals be made, uh, by you, President Spatafor.
Very good. That is a proper motion. Uh, if there is no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Referrals, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seventy eight zero nays, the motion is adopted. And we have an item from the city clerk regarding Minnesota Ford's commissions and authority term expirations.
Place on file.
Um, items from the mayor regarding the extension of the declaration of state of emergency regarding COVID nineteen.
The committee of the whole.
In a public hearing, um, and, uh, approving the, uh, noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers uh, uh, the North Grand River Project.
The city and committee, the committee on city operations.
Um, and setting a public hearing and approving a public act four twenty five agreement with the Wyt Township.
City operations.
And, uh, first amendment to.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, go back, uh, committee of the whole.
Uh, first amendments to the agreement with the Wyt Township and that, that is the prior agreements.
Committee of the whole.
Uh, say in a public hearing and approving the Brownfield Plan number seventy five, Capital City Market and six thirty seven East Michigan Avenue.
The committee on development and planning.
Um, the appointment of Trevor Benoit as a member of the downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
The committee on development and planning.
Uh, appointment of Jennifer Estill as, uh, member of downtown Lansing Board.
The committee on development and planning.
And the appointment of Danielle Letts, uh, to the Lepha Board of Commissions.
The committee of the whole.
And communications and petitions, we have a letter from Jessica Yorko in support of Black Lives Matter for Lansing.
Please place that in.
And we are to motion of excuse absence.
Your motion to excuse Councilmember Spitzley. So, Councilmember Dunbar, well, thank you. Thank you. No further discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Eight, seven, yes, zero, nays, the excuses adopted and two remarks by councilmembers.
Any councilmembers wishing to make final remarks this evening? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, as we're all set.
All right, remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, anything to close us out? We, nope, none for the mayor. Very good, Mr. Clerk. We are set for public comment.
Okay, public comment. And once again, raise your hand. And once the, once we're three minutes in, we will stop accepting additional raised hands. The first speaker is Ash, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm speaking today, demand, to demand a vote of no confidence for Andy Shore, to demand that you, Councilmember Betts, resign, to demand that the council do something to force officers to wear their masks, to demand a hearing on the police department murder of Anthony Hulan and the brutality committed by those on the department, and to demand that you shut down the jail and support the resolution to defund the police. Even if a no confidence vote went removed, Shore would signal to the people of the city that the council cares about those he's harmed and may harm in the future. I've said this before multiple times. Again, I refuse to allow you to forget, Andy would not dignify the, the, sorry, dignify with interaction, the protesting city employees and retirees who the healthcare he stole, but he felt comfortable enough to interact with white supremacists and militiamen on the day of the presidential inauguration, calling them peaceful when their intent and impact is not and will never be peaceful. He refused to give city employees the dignity he afforded to white supremacists. Brett, Betts, you need to resign too. We can all see that you're here for a paycheck and it's pretty pathetic. Your constituents don't want you representing them anymore, and you've lost more of your council capabilities. So show a little dignity and step down so replacement can be found. But most importantly, the coroner ruled Anthony Hulan's death a homicide. This homicide was perpetrated by police officers. It didn't just happen to happen. Anthony Hulan was murdered by police officers, the city pays, and the jail, the city funds. The jail, sorry, a city, a city that you all run paid people to murder Anthony Hulan, and you're just letting them get away with it. Stop letting them get away with it. Just because they weren't charged with a criminal charge doesn't mean you can't fire them. The coroner ruled this a murder. The rule is a murder. Fire the murderers. They are a danger. Seven sheriff's officers in Collin County, Texas were fired on Thursday after murdering twenty-six year old person named Marvin D. Scott, the third. Seven murderers hiding behind their badges were fired. Meanwhile, you're here in Lansing, Michigan, allowing the murderers of Anthony Hulan to keep their jobs. Not only is this a travesty in and of itself, but it's also an indication to the rest of the people who work with these murderers that their badge protects them and they can do this in the future without consequence. You're telling the department, any of you who wishes to continue to commit brutal acts of violence against the city's residents is free to do so. And how dare you sit here all evening acting as if you are civil people when you're doing nothing about this disgusting, dangerous and supremely uncivil violence wrought at the hands of people this city pays. A city that pays you as well, a city that you are paid to protect and serve and take care of. And you're rewarding murderers with money and the cover of their position. You're letting murderers keep their position of power. Make it stop. Like, if they can, it was Texas where they fired seven people that were all part of, a, a part of the police department, sorry, the sheriff's, sheriff's department in Collin County. They were fired. Why can't a Texas county fire people, but you can't? It's Lansing, Michigan. I thought we were supposed to be progressive. Like, Texas is better than us somehow, a county in Texas, but y'all can't do something about it? Really? Like, is that really? I just, they murdered him. And just because there were criminal charges doesn't mean you can't do anything about it. You can do something about it. Please, will you do something about it? Please? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Cynthia Ward.
Hello again. And just to clarify and restate, the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery has arranged to have one of our volunteers, Joe Winkle, serve as a team leader to coordinate people coming into North Cemetery on a regular basis throughout the season to do cleanup. And the city is providing the trash bag and gloves and so forth for them. So if you have any interest in being one of those volunteers, you can contact us at the cemetery courtesy office on AOL at semcourtesy at AOL dot com or at five one seven eight eight seven eighteen forty-seven. And we will set you up, put you in with Joe to get a spot reserved for you to help with that effort. And I second the comment made by the earlier speaker. Mr. Betts, you stated at one time that if your constituents wanted you to resign, you would do so. I think it's been made abundantly clear that that is exactly what not just your constituents, but the majority of the citizens of Lansing want to see happen. You're not being an effective person with no committee assignments and unable to do anything besides sit there and be a yes man. So please do, as you said you would, and resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cynthia Ward, followed by Kyle.
Good evening, counsel. I am Cynthia Ward, fifty-four A District Court Judge. I continue to have full landlord tenant dockets each Wednesday, so I wanted to make sure the listening audience was aware that COVID emergency rental assistance funds are available, also known as CERA funds, C-E-R-A. Tenants or landlords can apply directly on Mishda's website through a tablet, smartphone or computer. So if tenants or landlords Google Mishda, M-S-H-D-A, and CERA, it will take them right to the application and they can do that online. And also, I wanted to let counsel know, as well as the listening audiences, I'm sure counsel is already aware that the CDC has extended its eviction protection through June thirtieth twenty twenty-one, and that information has been updated on the court's website. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Judge Ward. The next speaker is Kyle, followed by Michael Lynn.
I can hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mayor Shore, for your line items. Better late than ever, I suppose. They gave me some valuable insight into where your priorities are and where your priorities aren't. I would urge this council to strongly consider a vote for no, a vote of no confidence against Mayor Andy Shore. At this point, I'm profoundly disappointed in this council because I believe that Mayor Andy Shore being in a position to run for reelection in this city speaks to a failure on this body. Y'all are the legislative branch of the city. He's the executive, and I'd love, I would have loved to see some checks and balances. But we're not seeing it. Y'all were quick to move on Betts, one of your own. But you're not, you're, you sit on your hands with Shore. It's pending litigation. It's whatever. And so I just want to talk about like, what we're, what we're dealing with here. We're doing, not, this is not just an individual who submits their line items a week late. This is an individual who the community, who members of the community have labeled a white supremacist. This is an individual who is willing to use his words and his actions to perpetuate a system of white supremacy in the city of Lansing. This is a man who, with Chief Green, participated in a cover-up of the murder of Anthony Hulan in the city jail for eight months. For eight months, this murder, this murder was just covered up and nobody knew about it. Except, except for Mayor Shore and his people. And I'm not sure about this council. And I guess, at the, at the end of it, really, it's, if you want to know, if you don't, you don't, I guess, what I'm trying to say is you don't need to hear it from me, though. You can hear it from Mayor Shore himself. Go to Mayor Shore's website, lansingforward.com. Section one on community, the first six words under community are, we will leverage Lansing's existing diversity. And if that isn't like Mayor Shore mask off, I don't know what is, because, like, this is, this is a man who, the whole sentence, just to give you the whole sentence, we will leverage Lansing's existing diversity and employment opportunities to represent our city as an ideal place to live and thrive. So what he wants to do is he wants to take pictures of black and brown bodies to promote Lansing as a great place to live, rather than actually taking care of the people who live here. And so, like, if y'all want to support Mayor Shore making his commercial for the city, y'all can do that. But I am, like I said, profoundly disappointed that this body just continues to sit on your hands and I don't, I, I'd hope that you're suffering in silence, right? I'd hope that you have feelings about this that you're not sharing. But I would love to hear some actual words and see some actual actions from this body. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Lynn Jr., followed by Erica Lynn.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate that sentiment. I don't know that man, but that was spot on. A couple of things I wanted to address. First of all, what Kyle just said, I'm hearing more and more and more from outside of my networks and groups about Andy Shore. People are recognizing what you're doing. It, it is very polarizing. And yes, you're able to move people into positions to get pictures with them, as most recently, a flyer went out with Charlie Dean on it. And I just sent Charlie Dean all the information on what you've done to this city. So I'm sure you'll be receiving the call from him eventually to take his face off of that because he really is the people. But outside of that, I've been having conversations with these young people in this city, and they're terrified. I mean, they're literally terrified for their lives, riding down the street, going to the store, walking any place after dark. You know, what are you guys going to do about this? I'm, I'm, I'm on here speaking to you guys every single week for the last year and a half about the issues that we have in this city. And repeatedly, I come on here and hear silence from our leadership and the mayor. All we see is pictures and propaganda and no actually, no actual work at trying to help these young people. I, I task you, contact me. Your third world representative, Adam, contact me. Let me get some kids in front of you, man, so they can express to you how fearing for their life they are. And you guys wonder why they carry guns around everywhere they go. You don't have to deal with that environment. I've never ran into Andy Shore or Peter Spatafor at Cogers on the South Side. I've never ran into you at Lucky's Parlor Store. I've never ran into you anywhere these young people have to go. So you can understand the fears that they have from people that look just like them, walk in the same neighborhoods. And all of those situations, I keep bringing here to y'all, begging you, do something for these young people. And that's not three hundred thousand dollars to advance peace. That's something, anything. Make it a priority amongst you guys. More police don't do nothing but lock more of them up for trying to protect themselves. So you guys wonder why I'm licensing people for CPO? Because they're scared to death out here, so they're going to carry them anyways. And abstinence does not work amongst our young people. Maybe we educate these kids a little more. Maybe we put some money back into these community organizations that are actually doing this work, so we can do the work. That AG Nestle, her, her stance on what happened in that jail was obviously political. She could have just said she's not going to charge. That's it. Could have been just that. But she killed Anthony Hulan all over again to us, to the whole world, by making his death his fault. No doubtedly, Andy Shore, you had something to do with that. That reeked of you. That reeked of you. You all keep continuing to hide this thing, and then the Lansing Police Department posts that with no subject matter, just to show the whole world, we killed somebody and got away with it. I'll tell you what, you want to be a murderer and get away with it? Join the ranks of the Lansing Police Department.
Thank you. And our last speaker tonight is Erica Lynn.
Thank you. I would like to use my time tonight in light of the very traumatic experience of having to sit through the Attorney General's video explaining away Anthony Hulan's murder. So I just want to remind everyone that Anthony Hulan was a person and uplift his family's words. I was given permission by his sister Heather Hulan to read a post that she made, and this was April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one year ago today. When I woke up this morning, my life changed forever. The police were at my door to tell me my brother Anthony had passed away. I'm crushed, heartbroken. Someone precious has been stolen from me and my family. Anthony is the best brother you could ask for. He has always been there for me. When I was a kid, he would always check on me, let me tag along to the races, got me my first real job and my first car. Taught me how to be cool like him, although I was never as cool as him, but I tried. So many things he taught me, and he is definitely where I get my sarcasm, sarcasm and crazy sense of definitely where I get my sarcasm and crazy sense of humor from. Oh, my gosh, this guy is side splitting. If you knew him, then you know what I mean. And everyone knew my brother. He was just that spark that people wanted to be around. He had just celebrated his fifty-fourth birthday, and we joked about him being an old man and him getting us the senior discount next year. I can't believe that day will never come. I've never in my life been so sad. I hurt so much. My brother is everything to me, and I just can't accept it. My heart hurts to never get that goofy text that makes my day, or to be able to call him and tell him what's going on, or just shoot the shit is just too much. Or to say goodbye. My soul is crushed. To my brother, I love you more than you will ever know. I will miss you forever. I hope you are in a better place and can still see us. I still hear your voice. You are the best brother, and I love you forever. Fifty-four years was not enough time till we meet again, your baby sister. Anthony Scott Hulan, March twenty-first, nineteen sixty-six, to April eleventh, two thousand and twenty. It is so hard to not feel angry and hurt and tired and defeated listening to that video and the breakdown of events of Anthony Hulan's murder that had nothing to do with his death. But what it was, was blatant victim blame, and it was justifying the unjust, and it was almost too much to bear for all of us. I have seen strangers and families and friends and acquaintances in states just like Anthony was in, and they just needed help. They were agitated and they were being difficult, and people get really aggravated. And they get really done with dealing with them. And it's not only disgusting and terrifying that we, the people, would never be judged by our intent because it doesn't matter. But it's unacceptable that law enforcement, time and time again, gets away with murdering simply because their intent can't be proved to be criminal. They who are supposed to have more training and experience aren't held accountable, but I will always be held accountable because intent's not taken into consideration. Police inherently escalate situations, and he needed help and observation, not force and control or officers trying to pin him down and restrain him. And they caused his death. And watching poor Anthony in the state that he was in is horrifying because he was scared and he was confused. And all they offered him was aggression and force, and it should terrify us all, and it should hurt us all, and it should anger us. And everyone involved in this cover-up and the non-speaking out should be ashamed of themselves.
Thank you. That was our final speaker for the night.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. There is no further business before Lansing City Council at nine thirty-eight PM on April twelfth. We are adjourned.